Can I have a motion to open the work session?
Some.
All in favor? All right, welcome everyone to our work session of Tuesday, December 5th. Our penultimate town board meeting for the year. So we are going to start off.
Just ready for Sabrina.
Because we can do chat pack first. If she's, I know.
No, I kind of see you on the screen, but she's here, so Sabrina is jumping on to this.
Okay, so we're gonna start off, Sabrina can join us.
Yeah.
We're gonna start off with a discussion again with Pace and Nexus. Hello, Sabrina is joining us now.
Oh, great.
Um, to talk about again, as I'm sure you all know by now, we are starting a public visioning session for the town owned land in the Chappaqua hamlet. And we retained Pace and Nexus to help us with that process. So I know we're talking today about logos and some fun things like that. So I'm gonna ask you guys, Anastasia, see you there, to kind of take it away.
Okay, hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. So I'm gonna share my screen. Let's pop them there. Okay, so the purpose really today is to choose the direct, choose the logo. Um, so we can kind of forge ahead. You made some edits based on the conversation last time and the conversations previously also. So I'll just start with that. Um, so these are them in black and white, and then I'm gonna show you them in color. So similar to last time, I'm just gonna walk you through, through them and then explain each one, and then we can have a conversation about them. So this is the sketch one that was the same, everybody liked. We left the dots in, but the fill in the future here. Um, this one is that updated font. Originally, I just want to be, you guys know, I didn't ignore you on purpose. I know you liked the dots here. But for this logo, I really felt strongly about the town of Newcastle being larger. I think that this looks better. I think that if we put the eyes, especially on this one, it gets really lost and small. If you really want the, the, the dots of the eyes there, of course, do it. It's flexible and easy to do. This is just my suggestion. It, it felt very lost, small, so that's why I did that. I didn't ignore you. Uh, and then these two versions are the same fonts, but the letters closer together. Uh, because there was a, a conversation about that. And then this one down here is a more caps kind of version. And I'm gonna show you these in color, so you can now get a sense of them. So this is, and then I'm gonna, we'll talk about color next. So this is the way they would look, kind of colored in.
And before we get to colors, can I just ask, what does the board think about changing fill in the future to fill in our future?
I like that.
Our better, yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay, sorry I interrupted.
No, that's, that's great. Okay, so now we'll move on to the color. So we did two exploration, well, we did several explor- explorations, but just came down to these two. Um, the top one is this kind of blue-green feeling, and then the bottom's a more multi-color feeling. Uh, once we choose this direction, we can always work with strokes and things like that. Uh, but this is really just to get a sense of how we feel about the color.
I feel that there's a lot of gray to that color. I mean, there are many different shades, and I wouldn't want to go to primary color shades, but I feel like these shades are very dull. There's something about that, and I wish they could be a little more vibrant. I, I agree.
I'm curious, are they, are they vibrant on the other screens? Just because they're super vibrant on my screen and on the others. I'm wondering if it's a screen.
They're more pastelly.
Like a grayish pastel. There's something.
Like muted.
Yeah.
Because you have this, these bright oranges.
It's not bright.
It's a mustard color.
It's brown.
Yeah, I will tell you that the colors that I'm looking at are very dulled.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So, so that might be a screen issue as opposed to the actual color issue.
Yeah, so the V and the I are actually a very like, uh, vibrant, I would say, magenta.
Yeah, it's pink.
Pinkish area.
Yeah, here they're like a muted purple.
It's like a grape.
Yeah, it's like a grape.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll have to figure out.
I just thought this was actually the colors they picked.
But that being said, I actually like muted colors aside. I, I like the bottom one much better because I feel like it, it's more creative to have more colors. We're asking people to be creative and bring their ideas. I, I like the multicolored better.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Great.
Uh, maybe you could send us something printed that's the colors that you, you think.
You send, you send it by email to the town board, and we could, um, open it on our computers.
Yeah, I think we need to see it digitally because we're talking about website and the interfaces. So if it doesn't translate digitally on our screens, that I think we have a problem.
Also, were you, were you anticipating leaving the colors static?
No.
Because, you know, they can also change. Like, we don't have to have the yellow where it is now. We could have different versions, the colors.
Oh, yeah, so I have that.
For just a minute, though, can we go back and look at that for just a second?
So we do have, I just want to say where Jaclyn's headed. We do have prepared to show you those other kind of options, but we want to, we want to focus on the font and making sure we choose the font direction, and then I'll show you guys the, the movement stuff. So I don't know how you feel about the closer letters, because that was a, a conversation. Or if we like them further apart.
What do you guys think? Can we see it animated or?
I don't like the closer.
I like five.
It's messy.
I like the all capital.
I like that one, but not without the color.
Without the color, it's find it hard to read the, the letters.
With the color.
I like two.
Yeah, two and five. Those are the, the ones that I like.
The only thing is to remember that, oops, going the wrong way. Um, the only thing.
But two is close together. Do you mean two horizontal?
Number two, see, they're in the stars, they're numbers.
Oh, yeah.
It's that one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I like that one the best.
You like two also.
I prefer.
Five right now is a little hard to see, like the VI kind of looks like an M.
Because the letters are not completely closed, yeah.
Right.
Um, I, I also like five. I just wish the letters were bigger.
It's older than that, and it's better, yeah.
So maybe if they were bigger and we would see the color. Um, the fact that they're open is kind of interesting.
My preference is two. I'm not a big fan of number five. Okay, it looks a little too, um, futuristic. I don't know if that's like.
So it looks a little lighter for our town.
Well, I think it's more sophisticated. I, I'm thinking I like five.
I like five with tweaks. Two or five, two or five, those are my.
You're asking?
We have a, we have a focus group.
I, I, what do you guys think?
Creative people. Two? Anybody else?
You said fill in our future. Why the fill in? Because I think envision, the continuation of envision is envision our future. And it's shorter and catchier.
Envision our future, I like that.
Why the, why the fill in?
I like that.
Envision our future, because we're gonna have to draw it.
I think because they, they were thinking of doing it. I like.
The town of Newcastle.
We were looking at it for too long.
Envision our future, oh, I like that.
Catchy, pithy.
Way to go, Frank.
Yeah. Envision our future.
Takes time to get this created.
Uh huh, uh huh.
And what number do you like better? Focus group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you guys like?
Five seems very robotic.
In a negative way.
Okay, okay.
Can you go to the ones in color?
Two seems more creative and.
Okay.
And that's what we want.
All right, all right.
We want people to be creative.
It looks better with color, but in black and white it feels very robotic.
Well, two and four are similar. What's, what's the, what are we looking at a difference here?
The letters are together.
Tighter?
Closer together.
Okay, I like two, though. I do like two.
All right, winner, winner.
You could also.
Hey, you guys want to?
Increase the town of Newcastle the size.
So it's number two with the multiver- multi-color version.
Yeah, is, um, between two and four, is that the same font size that says the town of Newcastle? It looks bigger in four.
I like four.
Yes, I think I just.
Yeah, we like the town of Newcastle in four.
Oh, okay, yeah, we can make it, I like that too.
I actually like the fill in the future in four also, but it would say our future instead. That's bigger also. But we like the envision of two.
What if we took off the town? Could you put the dots in and just said Newcastle?
Newcastle.
I don't know, I can't think of the town of Newcastle.
Yeah, the town is, is okay.
If someone is randomly looking at this, you want them to understand that it's a town.
Yeah, I don't need the dots.
But, yeah, but for us.
Yeah, so I think we like envision in two, but the surrounding words of four.
I think without.
Yeah, I think this is an eye test.
Without the dots. I think it's a picture without the dots.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I like it. Town of Newcastle, envision our future.
Are you guys ready for some animation?
Yeah.
Okay. Change our mind.
Yeah, hurry, go, go.
Okay, so just showing you a couple of things. Obviously, the, these can be tweaked now that we've found our direction. But, so the idea of this first one is that it colors itself. Um, and then the idea of the second one is kind of what we were talking about last time. It's that, and I, I envision this as a social media campaign. Multiple people's hands coloring it in in different ways and showing that there are multiple visions and multiple people's perspective.
I can only tell that's a hand because you're telling me.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I don't know, I could tell it was a hand.
I wouldn't know that it's a hand. It looks just kind of messy.
The bottom one is messy.
Can you tell the one on the right is a hand?
Yes. I mean, I can tell they're both hands, but.
Well, now I can.
If there was more definition in the fingers.
Like, I know it's a hand.
I mean, that one looks.
I, I think it makes it, personally, I think it makes it look messier.
Yeah, I like the first one.
I like the top one.
Me too.
Me too.
Great, okay.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay.
Oh, please. We've been looking at this for.
Yes, exactly. Top one, I like, I like the new perspective we have with us tonight.
Number one.
All right, keep going, quick.
Keep that energy.
That's it?
That's it. The last one is just to show that, like we talked about last time, whether it's drone footage or video footage, like, we'll continue to explore animation within the word envision.
Great.
Okay, um, if you could just, um, email right now, can you email to me the logo with the colors?
Yeah, give me one second, okay?
Or to the town board at mynewcastle.org. I was just gonna put it on here and show it to everybody.
Yeah, just give me one second, okay? I'm gonna stop sharing.
Actually, being as good as we all get is like on our. And this is true, how it shows up on our devices. It's actually funny, though. It should be this way. The relationship should be so different.
I think if you email it, people can open it up on their phones too. Their computers, because all town board computers. I, I said, I said it might be easier if you can send it via email, so people can open it up on their phones, because all town hall computers are of similar, um, graphics.
Got it, okay.
This is where I get them both.
Yeah, we would get them on both.
Yeah, it's a good test, because I'm sure, as you guys know, they always say, don't pick samples from, from a computer, because every screen reads it slightly differently.
So you have the email townboard@mynewcastle.org.
You copy me if you wouldn't like.
I copy spring.
I might have you repeat that, because I'm just downloading the image now for you guys, so I'm not, uh, you beat me, sorry.
Ready?
Oh, not ready yet, still downloading. Sorry.
All the stuff behind her looks pastel too. I think, I think it's definitely a screen.
It is.
It looks pastelly behind me. It's not, black.
No.
The balance black. The other people.
No, all the stuff behind you.
Oh, well, maybe those kids' stuff.
The toys. They've got it in primary colors, it's kids' toys.
Okay.
That's really funny.
Okay, can you see that one more time for the email? I'm so sorry.
Yes, townboard.
Yep.
At mynewcastle.org.
Okay. I have you guys on here.
And Sabrina just asked to copy her, Anastasia.
Yeah, I got her. I'm gonna put you on it too, Jaclyn, so we could just test it together. So this is a JPG.
I, I wasn't worried.
Okay, he just sent the JPG. I'm also gonna export it as a PNG. I just sent it to you guys.
It's still vibrant on my screen.
It's a little more vibrant.
It's still.
I'm gonna check on my phone.
I still wouldn't call it yellow.
I still wouldn't call that vibrant.
Well, it's a lot more than it was.
Yes, okay.
It's more vibrant than it was on the.
Well, we, we don't want it to be primary colors.
No, 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 no. Just, just a little more saturated.
Hold on, I'm gonna test something.
Like a little more neon?
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, no.
Saturated, like deeper.
Oh, wow.
Saturation, yeah.
Vibrant.
Like saturated.
Oh, wow, that's so different.
Yeah, what?
It is different.
This is really, really great, though.
Yeah, it's better.
Oh, it's orange.
Oh, yeah.
It's supposed to be orange.
It's supposed to be orange, then brown.
Yes.
If you, if you do a screenshot of that, and then turn up your saturation, you'll see whatever look like.
So it's, it's orange, pink, green, blue are the colors.
So can we do it where we, yeah, can you increase the saturation on it?
I just did it now. I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm gonna have to email it to you, since you guys can't see it on the screen. Hold on, I'm doing a couple of tests. Just give me. A work session.
Yeah, I would definitely classify this as a true work session.
I'm just gonna use your two as example.
Oh, yeah, look, I just increased the saturation on it. It kind of is better than that.
Oh, yeah.
That looks awesome.
So on my iPhone, I took a screenshot and just turned the saturation all the way up, and it, it looks really good.
Send me a screenshot of that, so I get.
Can you screenshot your screenshot?
Okay, I did the same, but I just put a. It's a little different on here, but.
All right, I just sent it to everybody.
Okay, I'm gonna respond back with this, and I'll see if I can get.
That looks really good.
I love that.
Yeah.
That looks great.
Yeah, that looks really good. Good.
Let's see. And I just sent you what I did without seeing yours, so.
Okay, then we gotta move along.
Ooh, yeah, I think it's close. What I just did is close, but yes, we could get that there, no problem.
Okay, great, okay.
Mine's more neon-y, yours is more, yeah.
I didn't get yours yet, but.
Okay, we're, we're good, though. We can make those colors.
Okay.
No problem.
All right, are we done?
We're done.
Yeah, we did send over, Sabrina, you should have it. You can distribute it to everybody. We sent over the updates to the, um, the one pager.
I saw it coming tonight, yeah. I, I'll review it tomorrow and, and go from there.
Perfect, and then we'll be all set. All right, thank you, guys. Thank you so much, guys. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, goodbye.
Thank you.
Bye.
That was fun, thank you for the.
All right. Thank you, focus group.
You didn't know we were putting you to work on another project, right?
All right, so now we are going to move, um, to a discussion of chat pack, and we are joined by, um, the chairwoman and members of the Friends of the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center. I'm so welcome.
Thank you.
And I know you wanted to kind of talk to us about the future of the theater.
You did, oh, I was, no.
Or we can talk more about colors, if you want to do that too.
So. Sorry, do you guys just mind introducing yourself for the record?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm Michelle Gregson. I'm the chair of Friends of Chat Pack.
Um, Jennifer Sheehy, um, the treasurer.
I'm Frank Scheider, a member.
You're on the board, though.
On the board of, uh, of Friends of Chat Pack.
Thank you.
Uh, and Frank and I previously were on the committee, the Art and Culture Committee. So we, we've been with this a long time. So over the summer, we were having discussions, because as we know, COVID shut everything down for quite some time. And our theater manager, John Finelli, went west and kind of, okay, now what? Kind of thing. And so we did put on some things in the spring to see, you know, where that was going. We were a little reticent because of COVID, you know, was it gonna happen again? And we're gonna have to cancel everything. But then in the fall, we felt very confident that we could actually put on a, a pretty robust grouping of events.
Can I just interrupt you for one second, just to give a little more background, just to?
No, I was gonna give the background, yeah, and then, and then you can stop me if I didn't do enough. So, um, the reason why we formed is that when you say, want me to talk about how we formed Friends?
I wanted to kind of, yeah, start from there, and then the theater kind of took a, took a break.
Yeah, okay. So, all right, I heard you wanted me to go that far back. So what happened was, once, um, the Fre- the Friends of, um, Chappaqua was formed after, we were on the committee for a couple of years of the Art and Culture Committee, which is part of the town. And, uh, we were charged with determining what to do with this building. Is, is it something that was viable? Is there any outstanding issues like mold or anything that would prevent the town from taking it over? And we found after much deliberation, there really wasn't anything that was going to be objectionable. And our next, um, item that we were charged with was to find a part-time theater manager. We kind of had in our head the person without knowing a name that we needed. And the town board interviewed, I think it was five people. And the clear winner was John Finelli, because he had a children's theater that was really popular in Arma. He had a space, but he needed performance space. And so we were cognizant of taxpayer money, and we said he wanted certain amount of time as opposed to being paid. And he would be the person who would be a part-time theater manager at the theater. So it worked out really well. And that first year, year and a half, uh, John worked with one of the other people who actually applied for the position to, um, he was a promoter. He does the Pleasantful Music Festival and all that. So, um, they put on a lot of, a lot of programming, and as did we. But what was great was that we were able to see with someone else's dollar what worked and what didn't, what people were willing to pay and all that stuff. So that was incredibly helpful for us in looking at what kinds of things people wanted to see. And we were really gaining a lot of traction. It was becoming something people wanted to come and see COVID hits, so, um.
Well, before that, though, we realized, so the Arts and Culture Committee, and I was the liaison to that, realized that in order for it to be a fully functioning theater, there needed to be some changes. And the lights need to be upgraded, new sound, there's still things that need to be there. And so we needed to fundraise for that and get money. And as you probably all know, the town is not allowed to do that type of fundraising. So the Friends group was formed as a 501(c)(3). In order to do that fundraising, Michelle and Frank then stepped off the committee.
With Tracy Stein as well.
With Tracy Stein, because they couldn't be on the town committee and then be in charge of a fundraising arm. So they went to the fundraising arm, um, to help do that. But kind of right when they were really getting started, COVID hit, and really everything shut down. So the, the progress we had made as the arts committee to see how we can really turn this into a functioning theater sort of grinded ground.
Yeah, and, and Jill was incredibly helpful during all that time, because she was our liaison, in addition to you, obviously. So when John, John had put in quite a bit of, of things into the theater to make it functioning. He put in lighting, he put in what we determined was about $25,000 worth of things that he got from various other entities. And, um, Friends committed to paying him for those things. Now, the issue became, we didn't think COVID was gonna come. So how do you pay someone when you have very little money in the bank? But we committed to that, and we paid him a year ago. We were all paid up with him, and that was fine. So when we looked at programming, we, um, made decisions about what we thought the, um, people wanted to see. We've done incredibly well this fall, which was great. But one of the reasons why we put this document together, and it's a working document, which it's not like this is in stone, was because most of the people on the board are theater people or run businesses. And this is a business. It's not a rec field, it's not a lot of other things that the town is responsible for. It's a theater, and theater is very different than other entities. We are, we cannot tell you how thrilled we are that Lisa Tizzo is part of the group. She is as good as it gets. She's fabulous. And I also want to thank the town for putting in the concessions. Wow. That's a game changer, Frank, yeah. Total game changer. Um, the front of house looks terrific now. We have the, um, kitchen plus the area when we do concessions. And concessions, we have found, it's a huge moneymaker, enormous. And, um, it's not being used in the way it should be used, because as many things that are happening at Chat Pack, whether it's a rental, the town's doing something or whatever, we, we should, when I say we Friends, should be there to sell whatever, because that's a moneymaker. For instance, we're having Elf next Sunday, and sold out thankfully.
Two shows.
No, one show, that was, yeah, Pink Delicious was two shows, we had. So one show, and, um, the only thing we're going to sell, hopefully, is, is popcorn. Popcorn, this is just an example. It, maybe we pay a hundred, a hundred twenty-five dollars for the raw popcorn, the oil, all that stuff, and we can make fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars. It's a huge amount of money. And if you think about any other thing we do, there's a huge, that's a huge markup. That, that's a great way to make a lot of money, to offset the cost of the theater. Um, speaking of that, one of the things we've learned is we haven't quantified yet to our satisfaction, I would say, and, and you can address this, what it costs to run the theater. Because in the past, until the town took over the theater, it was being paid for by some, a Greenfield or another entity. So we looked at, we're looking now at 2024, if you will, to give us, to really quantify what, what are the dollars? Because we, we honestly don't know what the dollars are to run. We have an idea, but again, it wasn't fully operational for all of 2023. We really need to know what that number is.
I mean, in detail, right? So I mean, there's a bunch of different moving parts. And when you look at, at the town budget, for instance, it's. it doesn't really drill down into, what was the insurance? You know, what was the, what was the maintenance cost on the outside? How much should you guys invest in repairing the fountain, or unrepairing the fountain, or whatever? You know, all of those detailed things are in a slightly different part of your budget than the sixty or seventy thousand dollars that you have specifically allocated for the theater. But understanding those details is really important when you think about trying to figure out, where's the break even? You know, where's the profitability? You know, what can we do with grants? Because we are a 501(c)(3), we can do grants. I mean, we have a lot of flexibility, but we really would love to have a much better understanding of the, of the detailed financials.
Well, I think this is the first year also, you know, in terms of fundraising, it's hard to do fundraising when nobody knows the theater, right? So I think this is the first year, you know, because it stopped during COVID, that you've been able to put on really a lot of programming, and the theater has made a name for itself, and even the fact that we've been able to use it now for in-person, even town programs. We had people from, you know, the county used it for their budget presentation. We've had, you know, the Human Rights Day that we just had, we had people from other areas of the county come in. So now that I think it's become more visible, I think now is the great time for you to be able to start fundraising, and people actually know what the theater is, and you can start to monetize that.
Well, I mean, I was so thrilled when Holly came to the, um, How Sabah Kept Singing. That thing sold out in four days.
Great.
We were all in shock, like, what? Elf sold out in four days, and we did it last year. Pinkalicious was so popular that we had to add another tie to it, and we made a lot of money on that. Um, and speaking of that, part of, you know, we don't keep that money and say, oh, great, now, where, let's go away, you know, that. So we've committed to, for this year, to put in a monitor in the front of house so that anything that's coming into Chat Pack, people can see ahead of time. Additionally, we're working with Lisa Tizzo, because it's, it's paramount that we identify what I'm calling low hanging fruit. What are the things that renters and people who come into the theater use on a constant basis? Because right now, we have to go out for all of that stuff, and it's a lost leader. We can't charge anyone for that stuff and keep that revenue. So one of the things we're doing is we're buying a number of, I think we said ten, um, of those mics that attach to the person, because, a lot, right? Because, and, um, Frank can talk in a minute about being on our board and then also being a renter for, for, and a performer, because it's very different animals. So, um, one of the things we feel is critically important is the fundraising. We're looking at 2024 as a building year for Chat Pack, and I say it because in order for us, it's what comes first, the chicken or the egg, but we think we figure that one out. We need to make our theater be as techno- technologically akin to what other theaters have as possible. And to fundraise, again, let's look at low hanging fruit. We have seats, they're there. But we can use it as a fundraiser and sell the seats so people can put plaques on the back with their names on it, and.
Kind of like, um, Bedford Playhouse.
Correct.
Every theater has every seat is named.
It's very common thing to do, Ridgefield has it, everyone has it. And, um, our price would be similar to what Ridgefield has, and we could gain over $200,000. And it, that's like, doing nothing, we can get $200,000. And what we would use that money for, we would work with Lisa Tizzo in terms of what she's seeing renters need, but we need to upgrade the sound. Taking away Frank.
You ready?
Yeah.
You said, you made so many, thank you, Michelle. You made so many important points there, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick to what I know, um, and my experience, uh, there, at, at Chat Pack. I fell in love with the whole idea when you pulled me in. I don't know if I regret it or not. Back when you and Rob formed the Arts and Cultural Committee, am I accurate there? How many years ago is this? Six, seven?
I'm a roster of good friends, which is amazing. Everyone on that committee became very close.
Oh, very much so.
Yeah.
Uh, was it six or seven years ago? Probably?
Yeah, at least seven.
And, uh, I fell in love with Chat Pack, so as somebody who does shows and produces shows, there is nothing like it, anywhere in the county, or maybe in crossing state lines even. Why? You could find a hundred-seat theater, a bunch, a few of them. You could find an 1,100-seat theater, thousand seat. There is no 418 seat. Yes, I have every single one counted, because I sell every seat when I can. But that include, that even, we're excluding the part where the, where the board is, it takes up a couple of seats for the soundboarders. So you have 418 seats. Let me tell you, there are a lot of performers that don't want to walk into an 1,100-seat house, because when you get 200 people in an 1,100-seat house, it's embarrassing, right? But when you get 200 performers at Chat Pack, 200, uh, uh, seats.
It looks pretty fun.
Audience members, it looks pretty good, right?
It sounds good, it's, it's, you know, we got enough.
And, 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 I mean, it has so many assets. It has the proper rake to the audience. There isn't a bad seat in that house. You could sit far right, far left, you have complete view of the stage. Are there problems on the stage? Yeah. Can they be worked around? Yes, there's no fly space, there's no wing space. Big dreams, we'd love to see that happen. But I've.
Raised a lot more.
I've now, well, no, right, but let's talk about right now, what we can do. I've done five shows there at least, and everybody keeps saying, oh, I did the kickoff concert. I did the kickoff concert. And, and donated back 5,000 to Chat Pack, right? We, we raised $5,000 at that concert. And kind of the same problems we had then, we still have. Now, that being said, some great things have happened. Concessions. Wow. Ticket hooves. Beautiful, right? We had a ridiculously long closet with a boiler room and everything else, it was like, it was useless. It looks great now. It's functional. It, it's special. We did get some lights, they're somewhat functional. They were hung in the wrong place, because, I don't know, engineers looked at it. So what happens is they're too far back, and they're right in your eyes as a performer. We should put the bar back where it was, but, um, there, there, we need sound. So here's my, I keep producing shows there because and, and truly, anybody who knows me for five, it might sound like BS, but anybody who knows me for five minutes knows, I love the town, I love the venue, I like the people, and, and there's.
You don't love us?
Yes, I do. I, I love the people. But, but I want, I want this thing to make it so badly, but if I were anybody else, I would want to do a show there. I hate to tell you that, because you have the price tag, once you bring in.
Right, that's what happens.
Because you have to rent the sound system. And you have to rent, you have to bring in a sound person. You know, you go to, I'll use the Paramount, it's a gorgeous theater, I mean, you can't really compare it to the Paramount, but it has an amazing sound system and a staff sound person. So, uh, artists go there. You're not gonna get a lot of people that say, oh, I've got to put in $3,000 for a sound person in the sound system. That's a lot of tickets that you have to sell. Or five, $10 a ticket just to cover that added expense, then, then your rental.
Well, we had that with Steely Dan, when we had the Steely Dan cover band, because it was 11 performers, and we had to bring in all that stuff, and we were able to bring it in for, I would, I would say, a reasonable cost. But it was over and above what we were already paying the artists, 11 artists. So it became very, very expensive very quickly.
So that's knocking us out of the market, okay? Uh, when John Finelli left.
But that's something you can raise money for to purchase.
Well, if we had the sound system that we're, we wanted to put in, then we don't have to go out. We have.
What's the epoc limit cost?
The 90,000, I think we said, you know, 1,500.
And then a sound person, every time someone hires one.
That's the least it'd be expensive.
Some of them can bring their sound person with them. Some of these bigger acts.
That's not the major part.
That's pretty.
The ma- the major part of it is bringing that system, and you have to rent it, they have to haul it, you have to have somebody there to break it down.
Yeah. Yeah, that, we've spent a lot on that.
Because it's not a permanent feature.
And he was to work.
Everywhere. We went, I was just at the 92nd Street Watt, right? You should see the speaker arrays they have. I mean, every theater has a speaker, speaker array, we don't.
Yeah, that's great. I mean.
And, and my feeling is that I, I, well, look, we're doing another show, right?
Right.
We're doing a, a viewing of, of, of two short films with these three young women, average age of 21. Their 19 is the writer-director, she's unbelievably talented. My daughter's one, who's one of the actors, and a producer that's, a female producer that's 24. So the average age of these three, and so we're bringing them to town, and they're gonna do the viewing of the two films, with, one of which has already won eight Best Script Awards in, in film festivals around the country. We're, I'm so excited about it. And this is gonna happen at Chat Pack. I mean, it could be the launch of something really big.
Well, I have to say also, one of the things we've tried to do, um, and, and you know this, Jen, is to bring in people who graduated from Greeley, who are in the arts, so people know, you don't have to be an investment banker, you don't have to be a lot of these other things, you can have a career in the arts. And what winds up happening is, the parents bring in all these people, so all of a sudden, you, you've opened up your market to a whole nother group, and.
Maybe the parents want to also give a donation.
Correct, absolutely, you want, you want your name on a seat, you want your name on a brick.
Yeah, well, that's how it works. It's a self-fulfilling prophecy. So when I talk about 2024 being a fundraising year, it's how do we get the renters? Because the whole key to this is the renting of the theater. You know, we're gonna do a certain number of programs, but that's not gonna cut it, you know, we need to rent the theater. Once we put these things in, using, talking to people like you, Lisa Tizzo, what are the low hanging fruit? What are the things that are most often rented? And get those things in-house, so they become an asset to the town and an asset to us, because anything we buy is gifted to the town. We don't own it. It's gifted to the town. Then, we're talking a different ballgame. We also made the decision to bring our ticketing in-house. And that was done because the ticketing agent we had used prior, which I know you guys have used too, um, during COVID, they weren't getting any income, and they decided to keep everyone's money for like, six, eight months. It was ridiculous. And we threatened to sue them, and they gave us some money. Right, remember that?
Brown paper band.
Yeah, brown paper. It was, it was bad. So, um, we had Liz Schwartzwalder, who works in theater, a lot of the people on our board work in theater, investigated a whole bunch of options, and we decided to go with this one vendor, which we pay $7,500 a year for. But the data, it's all about data. When you talk about marketing, it's all about data. We have the data now. We know who comes to the kids' programs, who comes to music, who comes to whatever it is. Um, and the town uses that as well, so we have, we're getting a lot of information. We tack on.
One other reason is because when we were renting it to people who were selling their own tickets.
Oh, it was a disaster.
Sometimes they would cancel shows and not tell anybody, and then the people are calling us, why is, well, I'm standing outside and it's locked, and we had no control over it.
And it makes us look really bad.
So if we, if we require everyone to use our ticketing system, then we have control over it.
And we don't require it now, but we would like to see required for a couple of reasons. Number one, we get their data. Again, we know who comes to their stuff and becomes part of our database. Number two, when it comes to rentals, we can have sheets of, you know, 25% of the people come from Chappaqua, 30% come from here, so when they're doing their marketing, it helps. With all the data's like everything these days, so we own the data. And three, we put a facility fee on all of our rentals to help defray the cost of $7,500. The town currently doesn't do that. When you have a $10, uh, event for, per person, you can add $1. It's not coming to the town per se, but it really helps to fray, especially during the months when things is kind of quiet, during the summer months, it's kind of quiet at Chat Pack. We used to do $3, now we do $5, and we haven't had any pushback on that.
Oh, it's for the.
This is the town board meeting work session.
Cool.
Which is public, you're welcome to attend if you'd like to, chairs.
Are you looking for the planning board?
No, I was looking for the town board.
That's us.
Yeah, you could come, come on in.
It's gonna be a long, long while, like, I can.
No, this is the town board meeting, it's a work session.
This is what you're doing, work, like.
It's only a work session today.
We're in the middle of a meeting, have a seat.
Okay.
So.
Oh, yeah, don't worry about it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, um, by, by having that money, once we get to $7,500 nut, and if we require the renters to, to all use our system, we may have to get someone and pay someone to be able to put that data in, because we'll, we'll have a person, Liz does it for us now, but, you know, she's working full-time now in theater, so we, we may need to hire someone. But once you reach whatever nut that is, let's say, I'm gonna say $12,000, whatever, becomes a profit center. Go right back into the, into what, to defray some of the costs of what we're now spending money on. Um, and because we considered a facility fee, it goes back into the facility and running the facility. So we're looking at ways that we're currently doing business, but how can we make it bigger? We don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Well, to that point, so we did that three-day, remember I did that three-day musical?
Right.
A while back?
Right.
So I did a little musical. When John Finelli left, I didn't know, I was surprised, he took the piano. So there's a beat-up old piano that no reasonable piano player is gonna sit and sit at. It's useless. It's garbage, it's gotta go. So John took this.
Who did that belong to? Who did the piano belong to?
It was John's, I guess.
It was his.
And, uh, and it was a Yamaha, and it was decent, it was a concert quality, well, no, it was maybe a bit of Baldwin or something.
Yeah.
But it was a concert, concert piano, it was decent. And all of a sudden, I'm doing this show, and there's no piano there. I, I thought the piano, I thought it belonged to the place, right? So I had to bring in an electric keyboard, and we had to do it off, off camera, uh, off stage, out of eye shot, uh, in the wing. And, uh, but we made it work. I produced that show for about $22,000. And we cleared $41,000 for that kids' school up in Newburgh, in three days. This is the potential. We could turn a profit, but nobody's gonna do a show there. Maybe a show like that, but we had to do a stripped-down version of the show. No, nobody's gonna do concerts or a show there of any serious size, because we have to get some things done there. And I think that Friends of is uniquely structured with businesspeople, artists, marketing people that know their business and will mo- most efficiently get that done.
And we're free. The cost is typically due to, and you know.
Oh, you, you didn't get my bill then.
And you didn't get what it costs for me, no, I can't.
Yeah, and we're a 501(c)(3), so we're able to fundraise, which is a big deal.
And the other thing is. Yeah. Right.
Do grants, and apply to Western arts.
Try to be a friend.
Right.
And apply to grants, Western arts, and we've gotten significant grants.
We have gotten significant grants. And another thing is, I know Tracy Stein worked with Chris Bird at Glass Year, and putting in a grant for the roof. And that was $150,000 for that, which is great.
Fantastic. That was so needed.
Yeah, really needed. So, um.
And we've got to get the dressing rooms up, up to stuff, because the, the performers are saying, you know,
Yeah, that's. Yeah. Right.
The women are going in the women's room, and the sheet racks cut the side, you can see right under. It's like, we gotta fix that.
Yeah. So.
But, you know, we have floods, is that, is that fixed now?
Flood is fixed.
The flood is fixed, thank goodness.
Yeah, the flood is fixed now.
Uh, just for an update, what, what this does, did they crush the pipe outside when they were doing construction?
Downstairs.
Downstairs, yeah. Yeah, that's what happened.
And did they fix it now? They didn't fix the pipe?
No, we're gonna fix it.
You have to fix it, okay, they crushed it, that's right.
Oh, that, okay.
We can, yeah.
But.
Well, I just.
So, so we, we, we hear with, we hear you about the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, so, but you know, at the end of the day, like, we have to fix the flooding. It's not the high priority. Yeah.
We, we gotta do the parking lot. We've got, I mean, this is the stuff, you can't get.
Yeah, yeah. Correct, no, we get that, but part of it is.
But that's where it would come in, to the fundraising.
But we can function, we can function there, and we can do ourselves.
That's the thing is, you can, is to, to let us know what is gonna be needed.
And what's.
And maybe instead of someone giving a donation, they say, all right, we'll put the carpeting in, okay, we'll do the sheet wrap, we'll do, you know, bargaining in kind, which is worth a lot to us. If the town has to put something in, the RFP process becomes huge, and the amount of hoops someone has to go through to in order to get awarded, because you're, you're a government entity, and the cost winds up being a hundred.
Yeah, look, the wheels, we all know the wheels of bureaucracy.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, we're not any different than any other municipality.
Turn slowly.
But if, if we do it, we can do it more cost-effectively and probably quicker because of that. Um, we took a look at best practices also, because we wanted to know, there's gotta be other towns that own a building, and that have people, how are they structured? Because it's really important for us to know that, um, especially when we're preparing this, um, this proposal. Tarrytown Musical was, um, completely run by their Friends Group.
Right.
And had all volunteers until 2003. Then they realized they needed to hire some people. And, um, they hired an executive director, and they have nine full-time staff, 40 freelancers, and 200 volunteers. Which is what we would, we would say we would want to lead staff, and we would fill in with these, like freelancer-type people, and, and also have volunteers, which is great, because there's a lot of young people that have moved to town, and they want. And and also have volunteers, which is great, cuz there's a lot of young people that have moved to town and they wanna get involved.
How many seats does Tarrytown have, do you know?
And think, think about that, eleven hundred?
It's bigger, yeah.
Oh, it's a lot bigger.
Yeah.
It's a thousand, at least.
Yeah, uh, our theater is unique, as Frank said, because you have the two hundred
Very unique.
theater, two hundred seat theaters, you have the bigger theaters.
And then I think Richfield's five, five fifty?
But Richfield, so we're talking about Richfield, that was a good segue, thank you.
Yeah. It wasn't it?
Um. Um, it's also a nonprofit performing arts center. And it started as a town theater for over thirty years. And now it's entirely run by volunteers with the town on- owning the building and it opened in in two thousand, December two thousand. I was surprised, I didn't know that.
Richfield, I'm pretty sure that they leased it to some, there's like a six million dollar operating budget.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's huge, I'm not saying there isn't, but it started out as the town owning the building, that's my point.
Yeah, it's big business though.
Yeah. Yeah.
It all started in two thousand.
And you're.
But can I make a point about that, Michelle?
Yeah, I was shocked.
I'm shocked.
But.
How many, how many of yous in Richfield playhouse? Virtually everybody, almost, right?
Well, we're bringing some of their assets in.
How many of their board has been to Chappaqua, do you think?
Yeah.
How many people have been to Tarrytown Musical? Right?
Yeah.
This can be a destination.
It can be the northern west of Manchester.
This, right now, right now, we're appealing to Chappaqua. Right, which is beautiful, a lot of people here.
Well, and you know what, but Pinkalicious.
I'm sure.
What was interesting was, if any of you went to that, it was like overloaded pink, the girls, oh my god. Um, Pinkalicious was a great example of us working with the children's book festival people and tying everything together for a whole weekend.
Mm-hmm.
People came from Massachusetts, we were shocked.
Well, that's fantastic.
I couldn't believe it.
But like every show can do that.
Correct, and um, like the Elf thing was was half sold out by the time we did Pinkalicious, we was done.
I'm taking my daughters to a Taylor Swift cover band at the Capitol Theater in Portchester.
Yeah.
And if you could get them to come to Chappaqua, you'd sell out.
We could do it.
It sold out in like in one month.
Well, you know, one of the things we're doing now.
How many seats is that theater though?
It's big. Zack Garcia, Zack Garcia is not in the catalog and it's only a couple hundred.
Oh, okay, yes. That's, yeah, okay, that's good to know.
We got three hundred of them.
Um, part of it, okay, you can be on our.
But they have to have a sound system.
I fly, I fly.
Oh, that's so funny.
You need your sound system, we gotta, we gotta forget.
He knows fans, we could book them for Chappaqua.
One of the things, we went to Richfield was.
Yeah. Look, we'll get four hundred people in there, no problem, okay.
We looked at Richfield to see what kind of things are they doing.
They're a follower.
And it wasn't dissimilar from what we're doing at Chappaqua. So one of the things I decided to do was to give a call, they have, I love the show The Office. And there's a guy who, his name's Packer on the show, he's kind of obnoxious. Really obnoxious guy, rude, inappropriate, but he's he's a comedian and he's put together a show, The Office Trivia Show. And people compete against each other using their phones, they form teams.
That's fun.
And then there's there's a winner at the end, kinda thing. And and Richfield does it every year. So I said, alright, let me call up, you know, his agent and see what we can do, and they're coming to Chappaqua.
Wow, that's fun, that's fun.
And we're doing it on a Wednesday night, so I got him down to a little bit less money. But people were like, that's so amazing, and people coming up from the city cuz their kids wanna do that. So that's the thing, we need to look at where trends are going. And what can we do, um, and we know because of all of the new people who've moved in to our town, kids programming is huge, I mean.
Yeah, that's true.
Huge, in fact, when you had the uh, Nutcrackers this weekend. One of the issues, because we try to have someone at the theater from Friends to take a look and make sure everything's okay the day of. The um, it was almost sold, I I would say sold out, but there there was no cost for anyone coming in. If you had given two free tickets to the parents and then made people pay ten dollars for the ticket, it could have turned around and been a profit center. Additionally, we didn't know about, you know, the concessions could have been huge, so Liz Schwartzwalter Walter happened to be there. And she was raising money for some ball thing or something, something her kid was doing. And they made four hundred and fifty dollars. And they didn't even do anything quote unquote right. They just, you know, put some stuff together and and sold these boxes for ten dollars and she said, if we had been there, we could have sold the popcorn even, it would have been like a huge moneymaker. So we have to start thinking of, not only how to market this, but how with with what's existing, what can we do to turn it into a profit center? And we don't have to do a lot, it's just these little things, and the more people, the thing I've I've heard more and more, and I don't know if you've heard this. Is people in the community love the theater, when they come in and love the theater. And we have to think of this as a community theater, almost like an adjunct to what we have in town. So one thing we've heard, and I I spoke to Lisa about this the other day, is that people want us to have like a, like a theater troupe, our own theater troupe, an acting group. They wanna have a certainly kids theater, because that's gone from northern Westchester a lot.
Without camp, you said the sun's been on our head.
We could do camp, we can do camp, but John used to do that stuff because he had it already made.
Yeah.
Now, it's not impossible for us to do this, Rachel Goran was on our board, worked in a theater for ten years. And she knows all the contacts, but part of the issue we have is we don't know where our lane is in this. Can we, can we do that, do we have to negotiate, we so appreciate being here today, because we need to know what our parameters are from the board level, I mean, if you guys say go, then we go. Um, and we need to define our roles better and also be in communication. Um, I know Ally, you are now the liaison with the Parks and Rec. So meeting with you and maybe Jenna as well, because Jenna's been part of it on a more regular basis with with Lisa Tizzo, so people don't know if it's a town thing, if it's a rental, if it's whatever, so that we can market everything as one. And how can we make those rentals, not just pay the rent and go away, how can we make that a profit center for us? How can we do more to make more money on those rentals? And I think that should be what our goal is for twenty twenty four, and then once we have quantified exactly how much it costs. Then, because we've already put in all of the bells and whistles that we need to be competitive. Then we look at having a zero sum game at the end of twenty twenty five. Where it doesn't cost the town anything, once we've quantified that and how we get there. You know, from a a real number numbers cruncher, look at the, here's the goal, how do we get there? Uh, and I think, again, data is everything, it's all about the data. Don't you think that's right?
I I do, I think, you know, the devil's always in the details, and the more details we have, the smarter we are. And the more cohesive we are and the more we work together, I think the better outcome we're gonna have for everybody.
The other thing I wanted to just mention, a couple other things, just a couple months. Um, one of the things we did, when we knew we have um, some flexibility with our programming. Is to offer free tickets to anyone who works for the town. That includes the police, because we wanna say thank you. And it's a really nice perk to give people who are in our town. And wherever possible, we try to do that with with all of our events, I think that it's a nice gesture and it brings them in. And then they'll tell their friends and a lot of the.
That's good business, they bring family with them.
They bring friends, exactly, that's what winds up happening. Uh, we also, for our kids program, we always set aside some free tickets for the Boys and Girls Club. Because we don't want money to be a barrier of why someone can't come into our theater. In fact, with Elf, someone was complaining about the cost. And as an aside, they sent it to Lisa, Lisa Tizzo, sent it to me and I contacted the person and I said, if this is something financial, we're more than happy to copy the tickets. So I think that's important to for people to know confidentiality is is present. And we don't want you not to come with your kids because of that reason, so we tried to.
Is there a way, and I don't know if this is kosher, but is there a way to offer lower fee or um, free tickets to
Yes, yes.
residents who live in our town of Newcastle, affordable housing?
Yes.
Of course.
Yes.
We've done that, we have done.
Yeah, yeah, we 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 don't want it to, like like you're saying, a barrier for money. And that's why we try very hard to keep the costs of our programs, forty dollars is a high. That doesn't mean, I mean, I was saying this to people, what if we can get like a really big act? You don't have to go into the city, you're paying a hundred dollars to see someone really great or or a hundred fifty dollars.
People would, people would pay.
People would pay, so that's just a question of who's the right person to bring in, you know, that kinda thing. Um, and and it's not a new question.
And then you do a door, you you don't, it shouldn't cost us anything, you do it, you take fifteen percent, twenty percent of the door. That's correct.
Right.
And and you could make a.
Well, that's the issue.
Cuz it's it's such a, it's such a cool place, if you got a really great act, like we said, I mean, you're close. I mean, you know, Hillary Clinton was like, right there.
I mean, it was great.
And you can do different levels of things too, like you know, a VIP ticket to a show where you have a pre, you know, cocktail hour.
Yeah.
You have a wine, a wine store right up in the, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, line up and.
Let me tell you something, that Saba program that we had.
Cheaper tickets afterward.
You have no idea how many phone calls I got to replicate that in the city, everywhere else, it was huge and it really put Chappaqua on the map.
So we see the possibilities here, I mean, this is, this is.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what we try to do is really um, have good relationships with the people who rent our theater as well, because we want feedback, what works, what doesn't work.
So.
Because we want them to tell, most of them will tell their friends, you know, if you wanna go there, cuz they're really nice.
Mm-hmm.
They're not jerks, they're really nice here, and we try to have, we try to do things a little differently, like the Elf one, for those of you who've never seen it, I highly recommend coming.
It's awesome.
My son's even coming for it this year.
And we have a movie quality projector, which is another great addition, that's, that's wonderful.
So much for it.
Yeah, that's, and and we should be using that more often, is we we make it like Rocky Horror for Elf. Have you never seen it, in my my basement right now, looks like I I have Santa's workshop. I'm not kidding you, sold out, so we give the adults their own package of stuff, you know, and we give the kids. The coordinates, it coordinates with the script that we have, for it to interact the script.
Snowball fight.
It's awesome.
And when there's a snowball fight in the movie, there's a snowball fight in the theater, you know, like that. Um, and so we make some money off of it, but we we want the kids to have this great experience and that's why it sold out as fast as it did. And and that's what makes it special. Last year, I don't know if you were aware of it, last year, the same day, the same time, Jacob Burns had the same film. They showed Elf the same day, the same time, we saw that, they did not even come close.
I bet they were a lot more expensive too.
They were the same, but we were giving all this other stuff, so, so it was interactive.
Yeah, it was interactive.
Is your screen bigger than what they have?
No.
No, cuz it's it's smaller, they have smaller space, like one fifty, I think, is the one.
It's a tower.
Do a screening on that.
Well, they they have multiple theaters, so they can move to different places.
So. So, um, I think, you know, I'm trying to kind of move it along a little bit.
No, I know, so the purpose is to find out how we can work together.
I'll add, I mentioned one more thing, subscriptions, when we have, when we have a full season.
So.
Correct, that's the whole case.
We get to sell subscriptions, that's gonna be.
Right.
So I think that, you know, this is kind of, in my view.
Are you excited about this, or is it?
No, I'm excited, well, you know, I'm excited, but in my view, this is kind of
You've always been.
the first year that I think you guys can really do significant fundraising. I think kind of the stage has been set over the last like year and a half since covid. Um, and so I would like to see that happen and then have you be able to upgrade the theater. We know that there's a way to do a raise where it goes from floor to ceiling.
Correct, correct.
Our theater is very wide, our stage, so there's a way you can actually have kind of like long fire poles, basically.
A trellis. A truss, yeah.
And then then sound comes off of those.
And the reason being that the ceiling wasn't built for an array to be hoisted up there, so we'd have to do work on that.
Right, it's not strong enough for that. But I, but most, most theaters, when I go, I go to a lot of Broadway shows and they all have those on the side.
So it would mount to the floor, it would mount to the ceiling, it's great.
Yes, exactly.
So, um, you know, once we can do that, I think I would like to give you the go ahead to do that fundraising. Um, obviously, we have to make sure everything's kosher from a from a legal perspective, but what we were told before was that, yes, it's something we can name the the theater, we can name, not the building, but we can name the theater.
Yeah, the theater.
And we can name like the rooms and we can name the seats. Um, but I would sort of like to see where this goes and give you that go ahead. I do think, you know, one of the things I've liked, and I know Jill has too, and we've appreciated is we've had a very great relationship with you, so we know, we use that theater a lot. And you know, for for camps, when it's raining, kids go there, we used it. You know, rain dates for performances, we have our, you know, Holocaust Union Rights had an event there the other day, we've used it for many things. So I like that we kind of keep that coordinated calendar, that Lisa's been phenomenal, so that both groups can kind of go to her to to reserve spaces and and know that that works. Um, I do think we need to figure out a little better, um, who your point of contact is at the town. Because um, I think you need a direct line of communication, whether it's Jill, whether it's someone in the rec department, whether it's someone. I don't think it should be someone directly on the town board, but um, certainly you can work with the liaisons and the different groups. Um, to kind of discuss these things so that things can move on a on kind of in a fast paced way. Um, and if you need approval for certain things, that we can get that approval. If you have shows that you want the town to co-sponsor with you, so we're don't, we're not charging fees because we're co-sponsoring.
Right.
Um, I think that needs to come, you know, as a calendar quickly, so that the town can do that and know that, instead of it being a one-off thing.
Right. Correct.
But I I do think that there's a really great way that that this can work together and this theater, which has always been my dream, can really be kind of the preeminent theater in northern Westchester.
I agree.
Um, you know, and I think eventually it's a great, you know, I'm hoping we're gonna be able to if grants come through, um, you know, get even a a big generator on the building and that's something even power goes out and we could
Yeah.
make popcorn and run movies for kids, instead of them driving parents crazy at home, let them drive us crazy and show movies.
Even parents can do that though, I mean, there's no reason why, I mean, these parents are going crazy and then have.
You're talking about if if.
No, I know, if that, well, that could be, and if we had concessions, we charge nothing or a little bit. And on a Sunday, they they wanna get out of the house with their kids.
Yeah, or look, have a Marvel movie marathon or whatever it is and and sell all that, and I think it really could be great.
Something. It could be great, we have it there.
And I think that you now, you didn't, but I think you do now, have the right people in place.
Yeah, I agree with that.
On the friends group to actually with expertise and combined with Lisa Tizzo, who's there, who's amazing. I think you have the expertise to maybe try to move this forward and I'm willing to kind of, I'm not gonna be here next year, but if I had to give an answer now, I would say I'm willing to give that a year or two to see how that goes and really be able to make that push to the next level.
I mean, the hardest thing has been for people in theaters. It was covid, it it killed a lot of businesses, it killed a lot of, I mean, so it happened with Westchester Broadway Theater. I mean, it really decimated, even Broadway is having a hard time coming back from that as well. So the fact, we are so grateful that the town had the building, because
Oh, it's it's tough.
it took financial pressure off of a lot of the things that we're discussing today and I'm I'm so grateful. We all are on Friends for that, cuz otherwise that would have been it, that would have been just the end of it. And so we, don't we feel like we owe it to the town in a way to make this thing work, we're so committed. I mean, all of us on that, it's pers- it's personal, it's not business, it's personal, no, it's on, no, but it, it's it's been personal.
No, it's been a personal quest of ours, but over a number of years, yeah.
The passion and the love that you guys have really, it shines through and I honestly feel like really excited and enthusiastic about it. Um, you know, I'm I'm concerned about the financial cost for the town, that's something that we've discussed, but we, this is the first time that
Correct.
I'm partaking in a meeting with you guys, so it's been awesome to hear your thoughts and to to witness your enthusiasm and I love the arts, I know, I'm not the only one at this table, that does, so I would love for you guys to be a success and I would love to wholeheartedly say like, great, let's, I I would love to give you guys a year or two to see what you can do, but I wanna make sure that we fully understand what that is going to look like.
Yeah, I agree.
In terms of the town's finances, right, we have to be financially responsible.
I totally agree, this was in in our mind, this is the first of many meetings that we'll have, maybe small, where we work as a team.
Absolutely.
We're all on the same page, we all have the same goal, we're not working against you, you're not, you know, no, you can't do that. We're we're all wanting to row in the same direction.
I agree.
And and anything we can do to help you achieve that goal, cuz all of us wanna see that be successful, um.
I think what you're offering to the town is is so important. It's it's something that everyone can enjoy, older residents, younger residents, families, people out of town, and I agree, the right act.
Exactly.
I don't wanna go into the city anymore.
Right.
Yeah, and I'll just say, you know, I love the idea of a community theater, I mean, I love the arts, I think, Michelle, we first met when we were on the cultural
And then. Yeah.
In Richmond, which is the first thing I ever did in this town.
Yes, that's right.
And I I set up concerts at Chappaqua when the Chappaqua Orchestra was the Chappaqua Orchestra.
Right.
So I was in that space a long, long time ago, we tried to make it work. Um, I love the idea of a community theater and I also love the idea of a a theater that will draw from out of town too, so we've kind of had both things going and I love the energy that you have here. Um, so I would like to make it work, I think we have to make it work legally. We'll be talking to our council here, we have to make it work financially, I think it might be great for you to, you know, I don't know if you've met with Rob yet, you can do that, it's.
Of course, of course.
It's funny.
But um, so I I would
I would love to meet with Rob.
Yeah.
I would love to get these pieces to work together, but just initially, I'm glad that you're here talking to us as a town board, because you know, we we just.
you know, we we just didn't know for a very long time how this was working.
Exactly, and I think this is.
So I had no idea until we started to talk, and and now you're here giving us a structured, you know, view of what's going on, so I think this is the first step to to a road to doing things a little differently, in a more systematic way.
Right. Mm-hmm. Yes, definitely.
Where everyone's on the same page, we understand what's going on. And, you know, we'll put the building blocks together, I would love for this to work. I don't know that it's doing things differently, I just think that given the circumstances of the world, I will kind of understand, but I think that given, no, it's not that, I think given the, where the world was.
Well, the information, the information of what's coming in.
It's community, it's really, it's needing more approvals, certainly.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
You couldn't do things that you wanted to do with COVID, with everything else, and I think that now is that
No, but it is. It's such a relief to be post-COVID, it's such a.
you have the ability to actually do that, the world has opened up a bit. I think it's, this is, this is your time, and we've been struggling to get this theater off the ground, and obviously, things beyond our control kind of stopped it, and I think now we have that momentum that we've been doing for the last like year and year, year and a half, to finally get a name for itself, for the theater, that now is the time to be able to finally take that next step, and I wish I was gonna be on this board, I know you want me on your board, but I wish I was
Yeah.
gonna be on this side to be able to help you do that, but I I'm so excited that it's finally the time that we we can do that from the, you know, take the next step.
And I I I can't tell you how thrilled I am that you're going to be on the board. On the other hand, I'm very upset that you're gonna be on.
When you even say that.
I I got you, I got you.
It's like that double-edged sword, yeah.
But it's nice to know that people are like-minded on this issue, that's that, it's it's real, there's pressure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's intentional.
And look, eventually, you can take some of also that facility's fee, because the town does right now spend a decent amount of money to keep that facility going, to pay for heat, to pay for age back.
Yeah, right, right.
That's what I'm saying, that can become a profit center of something.
So some of that facilities fee can actually go back to the town
Correct.
to spend on the facility itself, and Rob would have to figure out how that gets done and and.
Correct, that's exactly right. Yeah, that's a budget. Well, part of it too is that we have to have the renters use the, use the our ticketing agent.
I'd like to see that.
Mm-hmm.
And if they do that, I mean, for us, it's a win-win, because not only do we get the revenue, we get the data.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Get the data.
Yeah.
I mean, the fact that we exist post-COVID is a miracle all its own, and and now, and yeah, I mean, it's
Well, I thank all the people here.
Right.
Now, you guys.
Now, it's, you know, I feel like we're a coiled spring, just waiting for somebody to pull the pin, and let us let us go.
Right.
But it there's real potential, I just.
And any ideas you have for programming?
That's very exciting.
Rock and roll playhouse.
Just, anything you just let us know, because we'll investigate.
I told you, the Beatles versus the Stones was amazing, and it was at, it was at um Richfield.
Alright. Right, you said it.
Sold out.
Okay, maybe we'll do that.
So much fun, and it'll get a little bit of the older demographic.
We'll talk about it. Well, but also, we need to look.
Cause we have a lot for kids, and we have big, though.
Well, we have the other, we have that Rat Pack show too, they're amazing, these guys are amazing.
Yeah. The thing is too, one thing to consider is.
They're a little younger than that.
No, but the people in town will come to that.
With regard to concessions, is we were selling beer and wine.
Yeah.
Big markup.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Do we have it, are we liquor license?
Well.
It's important.
It it, it's not my decision, it's the town's decision.
What's the rules on that?
So, I I'm not sure if the town-owned building, if we can get a liquor license on a town-owned building, we're not sure, we're not much.
We don't, it's not much, it's not one-off.
I think it's.
But you can get as
But could you do it event-based, if you have a bar and booze?
You can get event-based.
No, which we knew. But the issue became that if
It's only a certain number, if you're here.
if we, no, I know, we wouldn't do it for, although I'm sure some of the parents would like us to put some liquor in their little bags.
Yeah, definitely.
And chocolate, and that chocolate.
But um we were told that we wouldn't get the space, it wasn't an issue of whether we could use liquor, we wouldn't get the space for free, and the amount. Yeah, and I I don't understand that, no, and and we felt that it was more worth more to us to have the free rental
Right. Right.
than it was for us to have the liquor.
Well, and without a liquor license, you can do what you're doing now, or, you know, if they use Dodds or something, or one of the other local
Right.
um wine stores, where you can take it, you can buy it from them, you, whatever you don't use, you can actually return.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we need, Dodds.
But if you have a liquor license, you're very limited as to distributors you're allowed to use, and I'm not sure you could use local distributors necessarily.
Right. But then.
Can a caterer set up there, and then just take us to to use the space?
Well, like. Or we can use, but we can use Dodds, they, in the past, we had them coming themselves and serve the liquor, and we.
Yeah.
And so they have the liquor licenses.
So I would right now, I would really need to, but I would
There you go.
We don't, yeah, but just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Alright, that's fine.
Event licenses right now, which you can do, and
Yeah, right now, we're gonna do anything.
you know, which are good for comedy shows, things like that, and then kind of that should be something that we figure out for the future.
Correct. Exactly, just.
I know, I know, I'm trying to move along, can I just maybe just say something?
Sure.
Um, so I I I agree with what Spencer said about kind of the energy and the passion and programming, and I I, you know that I really loved the, how Saba kept singing. Um, so I'm totally supportive of how we um take this and move it forward, I think you've kind of nailed um it on a few things, which is like, what's the low hanging fruit, how do we get more attracted to the renters? And then like kind of what's the accountability of the interaction model, so those are things I really think are great for us to work together and um and do that data collection and figure out, you know, so we've asked a lot of questions about the numbers and our things like that, I don't know that we've had a good opportunity to really collect the information, kind of assemble like a real P N L for that as a facility.
Totally agree.
And so I think that, you know, you guys are looking into the things that I think are really important, Jenna, you ever when it comes to money, so I have all the faith with you and Rob.
I can do it, Warren, Brooke, I can do it.
I was waiting for a but, I'm I'm like, this is good.
That's right. No.
And I I wanna say, Holly's been a great supporter of ours, when she was running for office, she spent a lot of time with us, and we so appreciated that, because it's important that people on the town board show up, because then people see, wow, they're coming, so this must be something real, and and we really appreciate it a lot.
I promise I will still continue to show up to almost every event, as I do now, when I'm no longer on the board.
But this time we'll make it late.
Do you know when anybody who goes to Broadway as often as they do, it's like weekly?
I do go to the kids' events.
No, she's, it's like every week she's going.
A weekly show?
Thank you so much.
She's coming to my show on December eleventh, December eleventh, big Christmas show.
Yeah.
She's like, downtown.
Which is awesome.
That's right, we gotta do it. So.
Alright, well, thank you guys, I think this is the beginning of many conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for. Definitely.
Are you coming on Friday?
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done, guys.
Okay.
Tell.
Okay.
Oh, cookies.
Oh, cookies.
Thank you for all the time, and putting this in your own resources.
Thank you.
No, my, my.
Thank you.
That's our pleasure.
You were awesome, you were awesome. You were awesome. Sorry, guys, okay.
Thank you guys very much.
Good luck.
We're just gonna finish the song with some administrative items.
Well, now I just have to do another.
Yes. Alright, um, our starting is uh painted planes, check stated December sixth, twenty twenty three. We've gotten authorization to approve the memorandum of understanding with Justice of County, which uh did grant us access to their West justice county, for its office registered online. We've got authorization to accept auction results, there were two uh cars uh from D P W, a two thousand and eight Ford Explorer, that went for fourteen hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. And a two thousand and five Chevy that went for sixteen hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-six. We've got authorization to declare surplus in scrap, it's an air compressor. Um authorization to solicit proposals uh for soft wash services for the liquid water storage tank, um I don't, it's got slightly algae and black moldy on on the outside of it, so we're gonna try to clean it up, so it's not such a nice thing. Um and the next is, we're gonna solicit proposals for arc flash studies, which is something that's required for the report treatment plan. Uh and the in-ing the pump station, we expect it somewhere between twenty-two and thirty-two thousand dollars, so we'll let the bids for that and see how it comes out. Uh the next is authorization to award the R F P to the Recreation Field Renovation Project. Um it's, it's recommended that if you wanted to uh reach way, they would be a little bit at twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. Um it's for the rec, it's for the infield at the rec field, it's become too volatile, and there is a um a lift between the um the base running path and the grass around it, so it's actually like a bit of a dangerous situation, with the ball kicking up and a trip hazard. Next is a resolution committee to match requirement to the TAP grant. As the board is aware, we have been diligently preparing um a TAP grant for submission, it's for um a total of uh five million dollars, and it will um hopefully pay for um part of the chat.
Right.
Um it will, it is actually a four million dollar grant, and requires a one million dollar grant from the town. This is the letter committing, the town board committing to those additional funds. If we're in a position that we're lucky enough to get the four million, that uh we would commit to one of the names, I'm just making sure everybody's aware of that.
Okay. One only now.
It doesn't actually get submitted until early next year.
But that last one was delayed so long, yeah.
I know, but I do have to tell you that today we received a letter in support from the N T A, Metro of Row.
Okay, alright. Yay.
Wow, that's huge, that's great, and we did get the one from the schools, and we've gotten from the boosters, and.
Okay.
Yes, we did. Yeah, we're, we we've gotten some terrific letters, I'll just, you know, I hope it's in the stores.
Yeah.
Um next is the authorization to approve the twenty twenty four agreement with the S P C A of Western, so we're required to have an agreement with uh someone who's going to be taking three dogs or uh to um cost utilization and uh services, so this is I've got uh, we've got a consent agenda, and just to remind the board, we have two additional resolutions that need to be brought in, um that we've discussed earlier today. Um so we just need to read the consent agenda, which is from.
Joe, I just, I just wanna mention to the board, next week at the meeting, um from my office from Diana, we're gonna get some uh resolutions to close some capital projects. Over the summer, I showed the board uh where we were at with fund balance and some projects that I wanted to fund, out of fund balance, so that will be up for your consideration next week, so. Just wanted to give you a heads up of that.
Same as Rob.
Thanks.
Alright, Holly, you wanna start?
Yes, I moved to adopt some items, one through seven is listed on the consent agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I moved to approve the payment of claims in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighteen cents. This is on the summary pre-check writing report in detail about your detailed report, both dated December first, twenty twenty three. These will be issued in mail to each claimant, this may be on Wednesday, December sixth, twenty twenty three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I moved to authorize the hiring of Stephen D Donovan to the position of fourth grade police officer within the Newcastle Police Department. Annual salary of seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. Effective December eleventh, twenty twenty three, this resolution hereby revises the one previously adopted on November fourteenth, twenty twenty three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So for number three, just to, um, sorry, because I I didn't give any backing on this, we have a special election tomorrow
Alright.
uh for LoSa, um our machines are in, we've got ballots, we've got books.
Mm-hmm.
And uh we need to pick up this resolution, so we can get our wonderful election inspectors, who will be working tomorrow from seven to seven in the assembly room at down hall. Please come down and vote, um so that's what this was.
What about the turnout?
I move to authorize the hiring of five election inspectors, as indicated below, to work the town of Newcastle special election, Wednesday, December sixth, twenty twenty three. From seven A M to seven P M at the hourly rate of twenty-five dollars per hour. Um Nancy Porte, Linda Helm, Lara Morrison, Fortune Aurora, and Dan Denefrio, Denefrio.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to adopt a local law to amend the provisions of chapter sixty-five, section two regarding filming.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to award the request for proposals for the renovation of the infield at Recreation Field to Greenway Property Services Inc. For the total base bid amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars, plus the option of add alternate number one for the total cost of seven thousand three hundred dollars.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Here we go.
We got resolution authorizing compensation right for an emission of land, we want to eminent domain.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Um I will um let's see, whereas town law section sixty-sixty-four two states of the town of Newcastle may fire land that enters domain in order to serve any public use or purpose, which includes any use that would contribute to the health, safety, general welfare, convenience, or prosperity of the community. Whereas in order to expand existing town D P W and highway department facilities, it's necessary for the town to acquire the garage facilities and storage space on portions of the property located at two twenty and two thirty Jones College and Way. Identified on the town of Newcastle tax map as parcel numbers one hundred point seven dash two dash two and one hundred point seven dash two dash three. Um as shown on the acquisition map. And whereas on June eighth, the town board adopted a resolution making a determination and findings under the eminent domain procedure law. And whereas on June eighth, the town, twenty twenty one, the town board declared the acquisition of the property to be an unlisted action pursuant to Secra, and whereas pursuant to the E D P L, a compensation offer was made to the property owner. Now therefore be resolved, the town board of the town of Newcastle hereby authorizes compensation to the property owner in an amount of one million one hundred seventy-five dollars for the acquisition.
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars. For the acquisition of the property and further authorizes the town supervisor, town administrator, and town attorney to take any and all actions and sign documents necessary to implement this resolution. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Uh Holly, you wanna do this one? Yeah, do I need to read all the where of this?
You don't have to.
Um I moved to adopt the following resolution authorizing supervisor to sign documents. Um this is regarding accepting an offer of dedication of easement at sixty-nine West Road.
Just read the resolve, I'm going to page two.
So. Now therefore be it resolved, the town board determines this to be an unlisted action pursuant to Secra and adopts the negative declaration attached to your two. And be it further resolved, the town adopts this resolution to resolve any bouncing, and the town did not complete the acceptance of the offer of dedication pursuant to the nineteen seventy-two resolution. And for avoidance of any doubt, such offer is hereby rejected and abandoned. And be further resolved, the town board accepts the offer of dedication of easement, accepting the proposed easement agreement between Reeve Halverson and Laura Halverson, as detailed in the plan prepared by Michael Bodendorf, P E, dated I don't know. Dated. I don't know. Is it not dated yet?
They're playing, yeah, it's it's not dated, they're planning, they're gonna finalize, so.
It's not dated.
This is gonna be, well.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just it's undated, because it could be finalized after the, after the resolution.
Uh okay, I understand, to be files finalized after resolution, and further authorizes the supervisor of the town of Newcastle to execute all documents as may be necessary for the purpose of recording the agreements. And the town attorney to take all actions necessary, if any, to implement this resolution. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, anything else?
I think so, I think that's it.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.